For Tuesday, April 8th, 2025, beginning at 6:00 PM, at Arcola City Hall, which is located at 13222 Highway 6, Arcola, Texas, 77583, for the purpose of considering the following items. The City Council of the City of Arcola, Texas, reserves the right to meeting closed sessions on any of the below items, should the need arise and if applicable pursuant to authorization by Title V, Chapter 551 of the Texas Government Code. The time is now 6:00 PM, and I'll call this meeting to order announcing that we do have a call. Tonight's invocation will be led by Councilmember Greg Abar, followed by the pleasurable leaving by Councilmember Florence Jackson.
Please bow your head. Dear Lord, thank you for the beautiful day you've given us today. Thank you for all the safe travel and bringing our citizens here for our meeting. Please come into the hearts and minds of the City Council and the mayor to make the best decisions possible for our city and its citizens. In Jesus' name we pray.
Amen.
Good morning, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This time we'll have roll call. Councilmember Helen Jones?
Here.
Councilmember Greg Abar?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Ebony St. Cole?
Present.
Councilmember Roland Mary Bigby?
Here.
And Councilmember Florence Jackson?
Present.
Also present is David Olson, City Attorney, Ingrid Flornoy, City Secretary, and Dr. Annette Goldberg, City Administrator. At this time, we will have public comments. Citizens who desire to address the City Council with comments of a general nature will be received at this time. A lot of time for a member of the public may address the City Council, it's limited to three minutes, provided that any member of the public who addresses the City Council through a translator is limited to six minutes. In accordance with the Texas Open Meetings Act, the City Council is restricted from discussing or taking action on items not listed on the agenda. It is our policy to have all speakers identify themselves when they come up to the dais, up to the podium. At this time, City Secretary, do we have any public comments?
No, Mayor, not at this time.
Okay. At this time, do we have any public comments for consent and regular agenda items?
Yes, Mayor.
Let me just say, you can, citizens who desire to address consent, consent agenda or regular agenda will be received at this time. Limited to a period of three minutes, unless you need a translator, then you will then have six minutes.
We have Mr. Rodrigo Carrion wanting to speak on Agenda Item 5F and Agenda Item 6D.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Rodrigo Carrion, and I'd like to let you all know, I'm a whiteboard member for Green Fresh Water Supply District Number One, and I speak on behalf to help you all and help the city improve and residents. And relating item 5F to help the city regarding plans is very useful. I left you a copy there relating Chapter 285 of TCQ Codes, which gives the authority to residents for developing our small lots and/or large lots and previous grandfather lots from the past, if they were subdivided before 88, 1988, and then also if they don't have no service, no public kind of service, it's like a one acre, if they have water or if they have sewer, one or the other, half acre subdivided, and if they have both, then they can be small lots, you know, that public and water is officially approved. And that's because TCQ came to explain to us, personal residents, and the county to understand, and we used to stay in court and all that, and everything been going smoothly, so we'll be coming to arise to residents. And also, I come to support item 6D, which is a contract for wastewater expansion of our Green Fresh Water Supply District Number One, and that way to help my community, personal area residents expand and get these public services that they need, and that way to be happy and justified against any injustice against the county come against them. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carrion.
Then, the Councilmember? Mayor.
So at this time, then we will then move to City Council comments. Councilmember Jones, do you have any comments at this time?
No, President.
Councilmember Abar?
No, Colonel.
Mayor Pro Tem?
No. No. Yes, I have one comment.
Okay.
It was brought to my attention that signs have already started coming down, and we know that it's against the law, but most of the time, people are going to be caught. So I would like this, whatever for you is for you, whether you have a signer or not, being the best person, win the election.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson.
You're welcome.
At this time, we'll move to our consent agenda. I will hold my comments until later, and we'll now move to the consent agenda.
Agenda Item 3, Consent Agenda 3A, Consideration of and Action on the Approval of the Minutes of the Regular Meeting of March 11th, 2025. Ingrid Flornoy, City Secretary.
I make a motion we approve the last regular meeting on March 11th, 2025.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Jones, seconded by Councilmember Bigby to approve the minutes from March 11th, 2025. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Minutes are approved.
Agenda Item 4, Presentations 4A, March 2025 Permit Monthly Report, Ms. Lenisha Garrett, Permit Manager.
Mayor, Council, and both Presidents, good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good evening. I'm here to present the Permit Department Report for the month of March of 2025. For the month of March 2025, the Permit Office issued a total of 43 permits, which consists of three building permits, two driveway permits, 14 electrical permits, one fence permit, one field dirt permit, one mechanical permit, one plat, 16 plumbing permits, three water sewer checks, and one water sewer tap for the month of March of 2025. Council, are there any questions?
Yeah, I have more questions. If they get like one field dirt permit, and then they said, oops, I didn't get enough, if they have to order another one, do they have to do another permit?
Well, so if you remember, a few months ago, we kind of altered our schedule of fees to address items like that, so residents who just needed to bring in less than five loads will pay a different amount of money, and then if it was five loads or more, they will pay more, so it depends. So if you was in a category and you pulled a permit where you submitted for two loads of dirt, you technically have up to five, and if you submit the permit for five or more, you fall in that category, but if you're doing new construction, then it's up to you to tell us how many loads you're going to bring in.
Okay. Thank you.
Mm-hmm. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Agenda Item 4B, City Engineer Report, Mr. Lawrence Turner.
Well, at this time, we'll just move him down the list when he comes on, okay?
Oh, yes, Mayor Howard.
Agenda Item 4C, Pine Dell Manor Town Hall Meeting, Mayor Vita B. Williams.
Yes. Good evening, everybody. I just wanted to let you all know that we will be having a town hall meeting in Pine Dell Manor. I know it's been kind of criticized that we're just doing Pine Dell Manor, but there are some specific issues that are going on in Pine Dell Manor that may not necessarily apply to everybody, and we want to be able to meet at a place where we can show the residents of Pine Dell Manor what the engineer and I will be gone through there, what he's seeing and stuff like that. So we're having it onsite in Pine Dell Manor on April 16th, from 6:30 PM to 7:30 PM, so that we can, you know, get the input and provide information to those specific residents. So that's why it's a town hall, but it's specifically focused on that. We will then have another town hall meeting here at the City of Arcola that will address the entire city, so that is coming also, and we'll set a date after this next.
Agenda Item 4D, State of the City, Mayor Vita B. Williams.
I would like to say, right now, what I'm going to do, I'll just touch on a few things right now with the state of the city, but I really want to move the majority of my state of the city to after executive session, because I have a presentation that I need to put on, but just in case people leave during executive session, I want to address these few items that's on here, a few things. We have gotten a design, a professional landscape design to look at the place over at the Wellness Park to do some designs over there, and I'm really excited about it. We did have balloon construction already go over and dig out the ditch and start the drainage process over there, so that, the process is starting, so we are looking forward to the Wellness Park coming into fruition, and I'm really excited about that. Wanted to remind everybody that Centipore Energy has told us that sometimes during the month of March and into, end of March and into the rest of April, they're going to be doing some blackout, there are going to be some blackouts, because they're doing work on some of the lines and down 521, so just expect it. We don't know when, but it's coming. I also would like to let you all know that we will have another heavy trash pickup on June 28th. We have been in contact, we are going to continue to have contact with them to make sure, June 28th, that Waste Connections show up on time, and we are here on time to greet them and have that taken care of. And I really would like to say, I thank everybody who came out to help on the last trash, the heavy trash pickup, and also that, you know, sometimes life just happens, right? And things don't go exactly like we planned them, but everybody's just jumped into action, and we were able to make it work for us, and Waste Connection did come a couple of days later and take care of everything, but I just wanted to make, just wanted to make a point of telling people thank you for the patience that you all showed and for just the commitment to doing this for the residents, so I appreciate you greatly. And then the last thing on, at this particular time, is that we will be having our fifth annual summer program this year. It will be structured slightly differently than it has been in the past, but nevertheless, we will have a summer program, and so in the May meeting, we will bring those dates and times and all of that to you, so look forward to the kids buzzing around City Hall again this summer. So that's all I have right now. I retain the rest of my time.
Your discretion, Mayor.
We will now move to Agenda Item 5, Regular Agenda Items, 5A, Discussion, Consideration of and Possible Action to Approve the March 2025 Municipal Operations and Consortium and MOC Report, Mr. Roland Liao, MOC Area Manager, Operations.
Good evening, Mayor, Council, and everyone here tonight. Y'all should have a copy of your Operator's Report in front of y'all, and we're looking at billing period between February 20th to March 20th of 2025. Your water connections, we had 969 connections and 18 of those being vacant. To the right is your sewer connections, we had a total of 1,909 connections, 688 being a freshwater one. Just below, we're looking at your billing, our well produced 4,450,000, 4,410,000 gallons was billed, which put us at a 99% accounted for. On your delinquent for March, we have water and sewer accounts 91, sewer only accounts 46. Just below, your revenue total was 120,945 with 71 cents. Just below, your wastewater treatment plant has been sampled in compliance and running okay. It's running at 75% capacity. We had two inches of rain for this period. Do you turn your page? We're looking at your sewer treatment plant. You'll see the highlighted in yellow, yellow, the first one being your total gallons, this is per day. To the right is your final chlorine residual. You can see we're in compliance, below 4.0, and to the right is your gallons from freshwater one. Just below, on the bottom, your monthly data, the flow gallons for the sewer plant was That number accounted for 75% of the permitted capacity for the plant. Do you turn your page and looking at your DMR, your Discharge Monitoring Report, which is taken by TCQ when they sample the plant? The main one I always like to focus on is the third one to the bottom, your E Coli, and we were in compliance at the 1.0 was the sample. Other than that, that's all I have on the Operator's Report unless y'all have a question on.
I have a question.
Yes, Mayor.
On the City of Arcola's treatment plant, the amount of gallons and total gallons and all that, reflow and all of it, flow reading, if I can. On February 12th, 2025, what was the difference to gallons were?
Usually when you see that high number is when we're taking rain. Due to the, due to the flow that gets into the INI, it usually produces a whole lot more than when you're normally flowing, and we tend to take a lot when those occurrences happen. So anytime you're usually seeing that high flow like that, that's relevant to that two inches of rain that we probably took. Two inches in the big district accounts for a lot of gallons. It's gotten better. There was a time when we were higher, but since Lift Station 2 has been rehabbed, that section has come down quite a bit.
Thank you.
The other thing I had, I didn't see it on the agenda, but we talked about it yesterday, was for Lift Station 1, we were asking approval for two 15 horsepower lift pumps, that's double the size of what it had, of seven and a half. We found with the amount of flow that comes into it, that those smaller pumps just couldn't keep up, especially when it's in rain events and you're getting a lot of INI coming in, infiltration. So one of the ways we combat that is we found that by putting a bigger pump in there, we're able to produce more flow, especially with Lift Station 2, now that it's correctly running at a correct pace because of all the corrections that we made out there. Lift Station 1 is now force supply for what it's coming in. So we, talking with the mayor, we put temporary 15 horsepower pump, just one, to see, and we still have a smaller pump, but we wanted to see what the reaction was going to be before we came up here. Prior to that, we put a 10 horsepower, and then we went to a 15. We found the 15 was able to get this pumped out, so there are no issues. So what we'd like to do is be able to put two pumps in there, two 15 horsepower. The cost for the pumps, both pumps and to install it, is 17,000. We'd like to see that. The other thing that I will note, which I noted before, is these pumps can be used again for Lift Station 3, Lift Station 2, as well as Lift Station 1. We will then take them out, once Lift Station 1 is complete, we'll put those in storage, so if we do lose a pump, which that happens, we can easily put this back in and then get that other one refurbished, well, but not losing any integrity to the lift station as far as what we're trying to accomplish with our lift station. So that's what we're asking approval for.
The rehab on Lift Station Number 2?
Yes, sir.
What size pumps are in Lift Station 2?
We have 15 in there.
Two 15s?
And Lift Station 3 has two 15 horsepower. So we have recent, back in, I think we talked about it today, back in December, we rehabbed those 15 horsepower pumps in Lift Station 3, so those are running correct, correctly. Lift Station 2, the whole area's been rehabbed, you know, we raised the manholes, we did a lot of cement work to them, those are running correctly, it's just we got to focus this Lift Station 1. But of course, we have a new one coming, so as soon as that's running, we'll be, that issue will be.
In the new Lift Station and Lift Station 1, what size pumps are in there?
They'll have 15.
15s.
So all these pumps are going to be reused. Part of the problem was this older Lift Station, back a long time ago, when we built this Lift Station, or it was built, it didn't need big pumps, because Arcola was still building. Yeah, in fact, that Lift Station is probably no wider than this right here, the hole. The new one is about twice that size, if not bigger, and it can, deeper, and it can take a whole lot more, and it'll be more productive than what we're doing.
Thank you.
Would they control the ditches, like the ditches out there? Some of them have a lot of water and some have no water.
It'll help, what's helped with the ditches is the fact that we raised those manholes in section, this section where Lift Station 2. When we raise those manholes, the water no longer goes into the Lift Station, it then flows out into the receiving stream or wherever it's going to end up upon or depend upon, but right now, with the way it is, it goes in to it and then it ends up at our sewer plant, and that's where the mayor's seen that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve the March 2025 MOC Operation and Consortium Report from Roland.
Motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tem Ebony St. Cole, seconded by Councilmember Jones, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The report has been accepted.
Agenda Item 5B, Discussion, Consideration of and Possible Action to Approve the Financial Reports for January 2025 and February 2025, Dr. Annette Goldberg, City Administrator.
Thank you. Mayor, I just want to let you know that I talked to the engineer, he's running about 10 minutes behind.
Okay.
He's in traffic.
Okay.
So Mayor, Council, I'd like to report to you, February, and as you know, if I do February, January's also included, so we'll do year-to-date. I am so excited to announce that the bookkeepers' report is a number that we have not seen in the City of Arcola for a long time. As you know, we have five checking accounts in Frost Bank, as of February 28th, 2025, we had a balance of $2,23,124. And in Tech Pool, we have seven savings accounts, is what we refer to, in Tech Pool, and we have a total of $7,282,178. So in total, the City of Arcola has in the checking account and in the savings account a total of $9,305,303. And that's the bookkeeping report, Mayor. With that, I'll start with General Fund, if there's not any questions. So we'll start with General Fund. I'm going to do year-to-date, which consists of October through February. For year-to-date municipal court, we have an actual revenue of $421,706 versus budget of $588,778. For other revenues, which would include plats and fees and franchise fees, we have a total year-to-date, $290,790, versus the budget of $406,478. Does everybody have this report?
I'm trying to, I'm trying to pick up, see where you are.
Okay, so I'm in General.
Oh, you're on February.
February.
Okay, okay. So I will now report the fire marshal revenue as of October through February, he has, we have received $281 versus budgeted of $1,209,200. For the food truck revenue, we have received $12,280, which is what was budgeted, $4,688. Our property tax collection, October through February, year-to-date, is $1,564,540 versus the budget of $636,988. So our total revenue for year-to-date has actually been received $2,649,027 versus the budget of $1,945,891. So we have far exceeded our budget. For expenditures, I'll start with administrative expenses. The actual expenses for year-to-date is $887,282 versus budget of $541,441. For capital improvements, you will see on Page 4, you will see an actual of $112,933, actual versus budgeted of $67,748. On Page 5 of 6, you will see contract services, year-to-date, $172,720, and budgeted is For the fire marshal expenses, actual is $611 versus budgeted $3,063. Insurance, year-to-date, is $59,920 versus budgeted of $31,279. Food truck expenses, actual year-to-date is $1,599 versus budgeted of $979. Municipal court expenses, the actuals are $241,689 versus budgeted of $411,973. If you turn to Page 6, the police department expenses, year-to-date, actual is $623,686 versus budgeted of $598,171. Down towards the middle of the page, you'll have repair and maintenance, actual expenses of $63,555 versus budget of $62,163. Total expenditure year-to-date is $2,164,980 versus budgeted of $1,945,891. So our net revenue for year-to-date is a positive $484,47. Are there any questions on the General Fund? Okay, I'll start with, I'll end, I should say, with the Enterprise Fund, and that consists of two pages. Please let me know if you have it. Again, I'll do year-to-date, which consists of October 24th to February 24th. Year-to-date revenue received is $1,550,493 versus year-to-date budget, which is $1,413,936. For wastewater collections, the expenditures there year-to-date is $329,33 versus budgeted of $263,646. If you turn to Page 2, I'll report the water operations, year-to-date, actuals are $256,484 versus year-to-date budget, $323,900. For the administrative costs for the Enterprise Fund, year-to-date is $136,654 versus year-to-date budget, $280,562. Total expenditures, year-to-date, is $824,675 versus year-to-date budget, $1,413,938. There is a net revenue of a positive $725,817. And that concludes my talk.
Can I entertain a motion? Are there any questions that I ask? Are there any questions of the report? If not, can I entertain a motion?
I make a motion to approve the February and January 2025 financial reports.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Abar, seconded by Council, by, sorry, Mayor Pro Tem St. Cole. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is passed.
Discussion, Consideration, and Possible Action to Approve TML Financial Bootcamp Report, Dr. Annette Goldberg, City Administrator.
Mayor and Council, we discussed yesterday the TML report that we received, and one of the recommendations was for a full-time finance director. In addition to that, there were some GLs currently in the budget related to terms that were unusual and needed to be combined with property taxes, and we will be doing that. And we will be doing that. The third thing that they recommended was that we engage in financial services. And of course, they recommended TML. But you'll see later on on the agenda, we found someone that was a lot less expensive and had the same years of experience. TML Bootcamp, to continue an engagement with them, would be about $200 an hour. And we were able to find the same quality and experience a lot less. And you'll see that agenda item coming up.
Please note that the reason why it's a lot less is because we're their first client in Texas, so yeah.
So approving this report with Council and Mayor would also allow us to post a full-time finance director as part of the recommendation.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve the TML Financial Bootcamp Report and also authorize the mayor and the city administrator to start pursuing identifying a full-time financial director for the City of Arcola.
Second. Motion has been made by Councilmember Abar, second by Councilmember Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion is passed.
Thank you.
Agenda item five D, discussion, consideration of and possible action to approve a resolution declaring official intent to reimburse its indentures by the City of Arcola, Texas. We will not have Mr. Reggie Wilson in his place. We will have Ms. Tila Peterman, Managing Director with Masters Advisors, Masterson Advisors.
Hi, Mayor. Hi, City Council. Members of City Council. So this is an item that will allow the city to use its funds now, come out of pocket, to make drainage improvements prior to hurricane season. And then when you issue your certificates of obligation later on this summer, it will allow you to reimburse yourselves with tax-exempt proceeds. This is, again, because we're issuing the debt on a tax-exempt basis. There's, there's a process for reimbursement resolution where you have to, you declare the intent to reimburse yourselves from tax-exempt proceeds. And there's a 60-day kind of look-back window. So that's why we're being proactive and coming before this body now, so that you can be proactive and deliver these services to your constituents before hurricanes.
Mayor, do we have a resolution?
Do we have a resolution?
Amy, we have a resolution.
Yes, it is. If you look at the document that says Secretary.
Certificate, city secretary.
Yeah. It's a part of that.
Oh, yeah. She had it separate yesterday.
She had it separate. It might be in front of your folder.
Here it is, right here.
Okay, thank you. It's in the front. There we go.
So can I entertain a motion on that? That item?
I make a motion that we approve the resolution declaring official intent to reimburse expenses for the work done for the certificates of obligation.
Second. Motion has been made by Councilmember Abar, second by Councilmember Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? The motion is passed. Thank you.
Agenda item five E, discussion, consideration of and possible action on delegation of underwriters for City of Arcola, Texas, Certificate of Obligation Series 2025, Chief Director with Masterson Advisors.
So yes, this is also related to the certificates of obligation. This is giving the, the power and authority to the mayor to select an underwriter to sell and issue your bonds as we get closer. Sorry, certificates of obligation, not bonds.
Yeah.
I make a motion that we authorize the mayor to select the underwriter for the certificates of obligation.
Second. Motion has been made by Councilmember Abar, second by Councilmember Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you.
Agenda item five F, discussion regarding plans, plat, and subdivision requirements in the City of Arcola, Texas. Mayor Vito Williams and Lawrence Turner, Kalluza Inc.
That would be Mayor Tyler. I defer to Lawrence.
Late Lawrence.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
This is an item that the mayor actually asked me to bring before council. One of the things that I did, and I don't know if you want to give them a little background on why this is an agenda item, or you want me to?
I'll give a real quick, I'll tell you.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. So basically, we, you know that we've recently passed the manufactured home ordinance to allow people who own property to have a manufactured home. And it's come up in the, in that vein, where people are in Arcola, you know, we have these lots of land and they want to subdivide it and give it to their kids or something like that, pass on property. And so they're having to go through this whole process, this plating and, well, we know we got to go permitting, site plan and all of that stuff. But plating, when you, when you look at the plating process, it seems a little more out of our league. And so they have to pay cost for a professional engineer and those costs can be really costly. I think you told me between $4,000 and $8,000 to get a plaque maybe. And so we're trying to look at ways to cut down on those costs for everyday residents who are not doing a huge subdivision plaque. So bottom line, that's.
And so one of the things that I did, and I'm going to just take a half a step back. So plating is part of the process when you subdivide the land. And so it's a matter of, you know, you have some developments that have lots of lots in them, so that cost gets distributed throughout those, all those lots, you know, like the postal points or something like that. It gets distributed there. And it's going to be a lot more than just four to eight. And I just gave a number, just a range right there. But the way that it is, is if you're going to, and I want you to understand why, why you normally have to do a plaque, is typically, and I've even given you all a little sheet to tell you the difference between a survey and a subdivision plaque. And so it's very, very basic, and we pretty much give this to all clients that come to our office when they're told by Fort Bend County or another city, you know, well, why do I have to do a plaque and what's the difference between the two? Very simplistic in telling you what's the difference between the two. Now, the real thing comes up to, to be, well, why on these developments where you have, let's say, two family members, you know, mama want to give daddy, or mama want to give child a piece of land. And what happens, even though they want to do that, what happens is they're still subdividing. And we still got to make sure that they have some kind of way that they have legal access to a public road right-of-way, because, you know, things happen with family. It happens with anybody. And so we normally make them plats, so that way they have legal access to road right-of-way, road front, so they can drive in and out and have access to their property. We also got to have something that's going to determine how they get water and sanitary sewer service to their property. Because typically what happens is, you know, mama, daddy's going to be in the front or a superior person, I don't know, superior, or whatever. Major landlord is going to be on the front side and somebody's going to be on the backside. And so you got to get the water and sewer there, because, you know, we're trying to do better here in Arcola. And one of those things is, we want to make sure that everybody's trying to conform to that. And so that's why they end up having to do a plaque. Also, too, with doing a plaque, that's also an opportunity that if we need easements, let's say, because we know we're going to have a waterline project or something, that's that opportunity to get that easement at that time when they're plating. So that's why we require the plaque. Now, I'm going to make the attorney come on in with me on this one right here, because the mayor has charged us with looking at how we can deviate from requiring a plaque in those instances. And, you know, my first thing I always say is, you know, I've got to go to the attorney, because that means we're going to have to change the rules. I don't get to change the rules. I get to tell you what is required, what we have to do to check the box. My job is to check the box and check the box on me. My job is also to try to help address challenges that are given to me, to say, okay, well, help me figure it out. And, and that's one that I just can't really do on my own, because no matter what I say or do, it's got to go to him. And he's going to have to say, well, I can defend this. The only other thing I'd like to mention, too, is, we want to be careful, because what we do for one, we can do and have to do for all. And I always get concerned, too, that, you know, sometimes people look for loopholes, you know, or take advantage of a rule that's there. And so I don't have the magic bullet answer tonight of how to, how to attack and resolve this, and I can't. I'm going to have to have, as we discussed on the call yesterday, Mr. Olson to help me, that we can come up with something that would be palatable for him to defend, that still accomplish the things that we want to do. And I get it, that it's, you know, it's, it's another expense, because even if they put that other manufacturing home, they still got to do the sewer tab. They still got to do the waterline tab. They still got to get a building permit. They still have to. So we're talking about one item, which is just the survey plaque, the subdivision plaque. But you've still got those other things. And, and those are, you know, items that have to be addressed. And one of the things, and again, we want to try to make sure we do that, because I don't think you want to have seven manufactured homes on a one piece of property. And a lot of times, what will happen is they'll have one meter, they go there, and everybody's tapping off of that meter. And so we're doing a disservice to the city and the system when we allow that to happen. And so, you know, that plaque kind of cuts that off right there, because now that's making you do that. But, you know, we were tasked yesterday to, to figure something out. I just don't have a figure-it-out answer. And like I said, I just can't figure it out on my own. Dave, I'm going to let you jump in right quick and save me.
I'll save you. Thanks. I mean, one of the other things just to think about, and there are, I mean, you have to think about the way things used to be done, before subdivision plats, was there was deed at property and between families, a lot of times in test states, so there was 1,000 owners. Access was a problem. So along, about 50 years ago, the state decided to give us the authority to regulate subdivisions. And by doing so, we then can clean that up. Subdivision plats, as far as value versus a survey, which is, like Lawrence said, just a representation of what exists, and it's in your cheat sheet as well, versus a subdivision plaque, which is not only stuff like making sure that they meet our requirements for lot size and things, and dedication of public rights away, easements, setbacks, all the other subdivision rules we have in place, it's really our only tool. If we were to deviate and do something lesser, it would be at that expense. I'm not saying legally it can't be done, but it would be challenging to distinguish somehow smaller tracts, no way to distinguish between ownership, I, you know, if you had one of the, what I like to call the old guard, you know, people that have lived here for generations versus somebody who just moved in, like Lawrence alluded to, we can't be discriminatory. So, I mean, we're happy to put something together that would apply to that. I think at the staff level, both the city attorney's office and the city engineer's office are probably going to be against it, because it's our one real tool to capture all those necessary dedications at the same time.
I want to add something to the end. So legislature, we got to get ready for this. Legislature, and I know, I want to, I'm paraphrasing, so capture it right for them. Because now they're about to come in and say, you know, right now, we used to say it was 5,000 square feet.
That's one admitted. Say, if there is a bill proposed to reduce the max or the minimum lot size that we could require down to, I forget what it is, it's about the size of.
A house.
Yeah. It's about eight, 2,000 square feet, less than that.
Right. And so with those things in mind, what I, what I feel like, even our subdivision rules and stuff, they, they are really geared toward big development, big developers coming into the city. But people who have land here can't subdivide their land without all these huge, huge costs. If they could, if they could, maybe they wouldn't be, you know, choosing manufactured home over going purchase a home. You know what I'm saying? Because they have the land here that, so they're trying to use. I feel like what we did is, Arcola decided it was going to start growing, and we brought in development, and we, we didn't use those subdivision rules, really. They were, because people, people were kind of doing their own thing, I understand. And we had to rein it in some. But at the same time, you have got to let the people know what those rules are. And if they never, if it didn't apply to them, you know what I'm saying? And that's what, I know we're trying to do that.
We'll explore.
Huh?
We're going to explore something. I have some ideas. I looked at some stuff today, between, you know, yesterday's meeting and tonight.
Okay.
And, I mean, it's, I'm not going to say this is a recommendation.
Right.
This is just something for you all to talk about. Because there is nothing unlawful from accepting a deed as transfer in easement dedication by written instrument.
Right.
Plaque is preferred, but there, there may be ways to accept for certain small developments that in lieu of, to make sure that we capture everything that we need to capture is going to be a different story. But, again, I don't think either one of us are going to recommend that's a good idea, but we will put something together for your review.
Okay. All right. Thank you. I appreciate you guys.
Thank you, David.
That sounds great. Okay, so, okay, that was just the discussion. And agenda item five G, discussion and update regarding City of Arcola, Towing Services Councilmember Rosemary Bigby.
Yeah, we got to do it on record.
Oh, okay. I was just, well, I'm not really concerned, but I was just wondering about the towing, because we had discussed it previously on two, two different companies. And one was heavy, heavy towing, and the other one was just regular towing with quality and I think Mr.
Wilson.
Mr. Wilson, that we had, we had discussed. But I didn't know how it was really going and was Mr. Wilson getting a fair amount of the towing. Even though he was heavy towing, was he also getting towing of permission like, like quality? So I didn't really, I didn't really know, but the chief said that it's being done fair. Right, chief? Okay, so, but there's no log that's kept or anything that, that, that shows who pulled here and who pulled.
We have towing slips that we keep track of.
You have what?
We have towing slips, so anytime we tow a vehicle, we have a vehicle log that we keep.
Okay.
Those are kept in the PD.
Okay, so if we wanted to look at that, it would see who did what.
And also dispatch can sell us, can sell, when we tow vehicles.
Dispatch?
Fort Bend County.
Fort Bend County. Okay. I just wanted to know that the item was kept and what kind of bookkeeping it. Okay, thank you.
Moving on to agenda item C.
I wondered if you want to go back to land.
I didn't, I was just, I saw you kind of.
Yeah, did we want to go back to land?
Oh, yeah.
We can.
Yes.
We're going to go back to agenda item four, presentations for Mr. Lawrence Turner, for B, City Engineer Report, Lawrence Turner, Kalluza Inc.
She stressed that one back.
I'm going to tell you, from Rosenberg to here is an hour and a half. It is not 30 minutes anymore.
No, it's not.
It is not. I don't know why. So growth is here. It does not matter. It doesn't ma, I'm like, man, it's hard for me to fathom. 30 minutes used to be good enough time. But anyway, and I'm guessing you all have this, I know you do, you share this. It's pretty much, everything's pretty much the same thing. The only ones that I want to touch base on and. The only ones that I want to touch base on, and it's actually coming up as an agenda item, is the North Pine Sanitary Sewer. And so, I'm going to really just kind of tell you that we have some work there, but I'm going to talk about it, because it is an agenda item. So, we'll really get into detail on that particular item right there. With regards to, let me just kind of go back up here, water plant expansion. Water plant expansion is, over at the MMD, they're just trying to get the final contract documents worked out. We're going to have a pre-construction meeting. I would imagine that we're going to start construction probably sometime in May. And that's over here at our water plant, right over here. The permit, ultimate wastewater treatment plant permit, that's still at TCQ, there's been no change of that right there. It's still there. We can't rush them. They're going to tell us. They got that information right there. The 450,000 gallon expansion, you're going to talk about that in a minute. That's my next agenda item. We're going to award the contract tonight, so I'll come back and really talk about that. Other than that, that's really all I have on my report right there. Most of them are pretty much items that are on the agenda. I will tell you that I don't have on here yet, is we're meeting tomorrow to talk about, we'll call it Expansion 3. And that's the expansion with Arcola, Freshwater Supply District 1, and the MMD. So, that's, you have an item, but I think it's going to get passed, the mayor's going to handle that, but we're having a meeting tomorrow at 10:30 to discuss that and work that out as well. That concludes my report. I'll entertain any questions that the mayor have with me. All right? I'll sit down. Thank you.
Thank you. Agenda Item 6, Contract and Agreement 6A, Discussion and Consideration of and Possible Action to Approve a Contract with MV Chang and Associates, Inc., for Financial Services in the Amount of $75 per Hour. General Fund, Dr. Annette Goldberg, City Administrator.
Council Mayor, we talked about this item yesterday, and I just talked about it earlier. This is the contract at $75 an hour versus $200 an hour. The person that's going to be working with us to create processes and policies actually lives in Forbin County, I believe that he lives in Rocheran. He's got over 30 years of municipal experience, and the mayor and I had the opportunity to talk to him, and we feel really confident that he can take us to the next level. And again, this is just temporary. This is not a long-term contract. This is just to get us through the hunt. As you know, we're also in the middle of an audit. He's also going to help me with that. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Do we have an estimate of how long the contract is going to last?
When I talked to him, he said about two to three months. And he is coming in part-time, he's not coming in eight hours a day. And so, he, I don't believe that it's longer than two or three months.
And do we have an estimate of how many hours he's going to work during that period?
I think y'all can set that. Y'all can, if you want to, y'all can kind of decide what, you know, what it needs to be, to keep those costs.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, that varies. We just have to monitor real carefully. I make a motion to approve the contract with MV Chang and Associates.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Abar, seconded by Mayor Pro Tim Sanko. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is passed. Thank you. Agenda Item 6B, Discussion and Consideration of and Possible Action on Awarding an Engineering Contract for the Expansion of the Wastewater Treatment Plant from 1.4 MGD to 1.8 MGD, 400,000 GPD, with cost not to exceed $707,800 in surprise fund, Mr. Larry Turner Kaluza, Inc.
I think yesterday, we decided to make a motion to table B and C for the contract and agreements.
That's correct. Mayor, you can do it again loudly, or you can entertain a motion.
Oh, okay. I'll entertain a motion.
Make a motion to table Agenda Items B and C on contract and agreements.
Motion has been made by Mayor Pro Tim Sanko, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, those motions are passed.
Agenda Item 6D, Discussion and Consideration of and Possible Action to Award the Construction Contract to Industrial Tech Corp. for the Wastewater Treatment Plant Expansion from 0.95 MGD to 1.4 MGD, 450,000 GPD Expansion, with the total construction cost not to exceed $9,553,638 in surprise funds, to be reimbursed by Freshwater Supply District Number 1, Mr. Larry Turner Kaluza, Inc.
I'm going to just do a little debriefing, so everybody makes sure we're all on the same page. And we always have lots of things going on at our wastewater treatment plant. And that's because of the growth that we just have here. Originally, our wastewater treatment plant, it's currently, right now, operating at 950,000 gallons per day. That's the maximum permit limit that we have right now. We prepared a permit, that permit will allow us to go up to this next expansion that we want to do. This expansion that we had plans, prepared for, went out for bids on, we received three bids from three reputable contractors. The lowest bid was from Industrial Tech Corp., and their bid amount, as stated earlier, was They're a very reputable contractor, they've done several work in this area. Everyone was okay with it. This information was also provided to Freshwater Supply District 1, they looked at it, their project engineer, David DiBalla, he's worked with them as well. And so, our recommendation is that we award this contract to this contractor. This project right here will increase it by, increase the capacity of the wastewater treatment plant, 450,000 gallons per day. That's what it's going to expand it to. And so, it's going to expand it to that, and that will get us up to 1.4 MGD when it's completed. The total working days on this is 365 days. This total capacity goes to Freshwater Supply District 1. This is all their capacity. And based on the numbers that they have and the bookkeeping that they're doing, they want theirs now, and they want to just keep this thing moving forward. And we've pretty much been keeping on schedule with everything that's been committed. Always remember this, that you have a relationship with Freshwater Supply District 1. Any one of the two, of those two, can make a request to expand it, and that's what happened in this case, just kind of want to refresh her. And they asked us if we want to participate, at that time, we did. And so, that's why we're up here now at 450,000 gallons. Because everything is all at their expense, everything. But they also get everything that's associated and related to this. Typically, what will happen as this project continues to move forward, just like we have in the past on this particular project, we get an invoice that goes to the city, the city forwards it over to Freshwater Supply District 1, they cut a check back to the city. No matter what, it's always going to happen, just like that. And that turnaround time, like when we start getting into construction, this contract at the end of the month, we'll have a pre-construction, we'll submit them at the end of the month, we'll process it. Normally, in 48 hours, we processed it, we'll get it over to the city, they'll probably take the 48 dollars processing, we'll forward on over to the MUD district, and we'll coordinate it such that they'll get it approved at their board meeting, and then they'll cut a check back to us, and we'll cut a check to the contractor. That's how the process is going to work. It's simple, smooth, and it works. I'll entertain any questions that anybody have with me, as it relates to this process or anything that's going on with this particular piece of the expansion.
Mr. Turner, so the bottom line is, we don't cut a check until Freshwater 1 gives us our check, pay it, then we can pay that.
Yeah. And all of it, and that's why it's like bam, 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 you know? And we get it with contractors. Contractors want their money, you know? And so, what will happen is, as soon as we get it, and we always let them know, hey, look, here's, I mean, it's in there, in the contract of how long it takes for them to get their money. But we make sure we don't slow it up. Any other questions for me?
Entertain a motion, please.
Make a motion that we approve the construction contract to Industrial Tech Corp. for increasing the wastewater treatment plant from 0.95 million gallons to 1.4 million gallons.
Second.
For the amount not to exceed $9,553,638.
Second. Motion has been made by Councilmember Jones, I'm sorry, by Councilmember Abar, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, motion is passed.
Agenda Item 6E, Discussion and Consideration of and Possible Action on Awarding Professional Engineering and Surveying Services, not to exceed the amount of $39,400 to Kaluza, Inc., for the Rehabilitation of Lift Station Number 3, and the Replacement of 450 linear feet of 12-inch sanitary sewer along North Pine in surprise fund, Mr. Larry Turner Kaluza, Inc.
So, you have in your package that proposal. I want to direct you to the last page of that proposal. Now, I'm a big picture guy, I like to see a picture. It should be the very, it should be a little map like that, little exhibit like this. And I want to kind of describe to you what's going on and what's happening right here on that very last page. This is, and what we're showing right here is at the intersection of 521 and North Pine. 521 and North Pine, you know, that's pretty much all vacant. On the south side of, on the south side of North Pine, it's pretty much all vacant right through there. And what happens is, you have a gravity 12-inch sanitary sewer line that drains north up to that intersection at North Pine and 521. You also have a signal storm sewer, sanitary sewer that flows south to that intersection. And then, from that manhole that you see right there at that intersection going east, it flows over towards a sanitary sewer lift station. What is happening is, the operator has gone out there, they've done some, we've had some complaints and some issues in that area, but they went out there, they actually televised that line. When we televised that line, we noticed we got some issues with regards to that line. We got, in one area where it looked like somebody tried to drill through the line, it may have been a utility company or something that did some work, I can't tell you who it is, but we have some issues in that line where it's been punctured. We also have other areas within that segment, that 450 feet of line, that has some deterioration in it. We also have, by looking at the televising, we got a sag in that line that's holding about nine inches of sewer back into it. And the only way you're going to get rid of a sag is, you just got to replace that line right there. You know, because we looked at trying to do a pipe bursting, but by the time you tried to do a pipe bursting, you still wouldn't get rid of the sag. So, we need to remove and replace that 450-foot sanitary sewer line right there. And that's what you see in the project area. Then, that dumps directly into that sanitary sewer lift station. That sanitary sewer lift station right there is basically draining this area right here. Even though we have a 12-inch line right there, the pumps that are in that lift station aren't really sized big enough to handle, you know, any additional flows. But the problem we have is the wet well. That's the same, and it's the same type of problem we had at Dallas and Masterson. If you remember, we just completed that rehab right there. And looking into that manhole during dry weather days, the water table is high enough that it's flowing into that wet well. We actually have pictures everywhere, it's like, you know, it's a sunny day, and that wet well right there is probably about 18 feet deep right there. And so, what we have is, we're sending groundwater over to the wastewater treatment plant, wasting money right there as well. And so, what this proposed project plans to do is to replace that 450 feet of sanitary sewer line and rehab that lift station, just like we did over there at Dallas and Masterson. In other words, plug up the holes and recote the whole interior with like Spectra Shield. And so, that's what this contract is for, is putting those bid documents together during the surveying work and the construction phase services. I'll entertain any questions that anybody have with me, as it relates to that particular project.
You say it was damaged, but you said it was a camera out there or something?
So, what happens is, MOC went out there and they camered the line. So, in other words, what happened is, you have two manholes, they'll run a TV up through the sanitary sewer line, and you can see inside the line, you can see where there's a hole in the line. You can also see, when you're pushing that line through, when you're pushing that camera through there, at some point, it goes underwater. Now, sewer's supposed to drain downhill. And so, when it's not draining downhill, and you have about nine inches of water in a 12-inch diameter pipe, so that means it fills up to about right here, there's something going on right there. And so, that's, and it's for, I think they told me it's about 80, 90 feet of length of pipe that's just holding sewer back. So, that's what I was referring to.
When you reference, you know, cameras, it's a TV camera, it's a little camera on a, that they stick into the pipe and kind of work this way.
Yeah, exactly. It is. It's sewer service. We get into it.
I wasn't going to say procolis.
It's a colonoscopy.
Okay, okay. There you go. Some of them.
Very much so.
So, you have to do the bypass?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, what kind of issues with that bypass do you have to kind of...
So, it's all, it's going to be about the timing, and so, we're going to bid these together. And so, that's going to be the key element right there. They're going to have to bypass each one, they're going to have to bypass for the sanitary sewer line replacement first, you know, and then they'll come back and bypass again for the lift station rehab. And so, they'll set up a lift station, they'll give us a bypass plan, we'll make sure we review it, approve it, and that we don't, you know, have any issues.
I've learned more about sewer than I ever thought.
That's all right. That's all right. An informed, educated California, it makes my job easier. Any other questions for me?
I make a motion, we approve the engineering contract with Kaluza, Inc., to rehab lift station number three and replace 450-foot of 12-inch sewer line, not to exceed the amount of $39,400.
Second. Motion has been made by Councilmember Abar, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is passed.
Aye, thank you.
All right. All right. So, let me get the time to, is that right now? Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, at this time, it is 7:06 PM. The City Council will convene and to close executive session as authorized under Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code for Consultation of Attorneys. And Chief, can we retain this?
Can everybody exit, and you can wait in the community center, and after the executive session?
We had an executive session, this would be the appropriate time.
Mayor, after review of the information and the options presented by the city staff, I would like to make a motion that the city does not have the water capacity to supply Arcola community estates with temporary or permanent water service at this time.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilmember Abar, seconded by Councilmember Jones. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is passed. At this time, we will also follow up on my State of the City section of the agenda. So, I would like to start this off by saying that there have been some, there's been a lot of posts and stuff on social media dealing with, stating that we're dealing with taxpayer, what we're doing with taxpayer dollars here. And because those posts are starting to get some comments and feedback, I want to take some time to address that. The post, one of the posts wanted to make sure that we were being transparent, and so, I wanted to make sure to allow the residents of Arcola to know exactly what we're doing here in the city of Arcola.
Is this on my phone?
I don't know. Where is it? Okay. So, I just did for, basically, the first two pages of that, I just basically did an outline of what we have passed in the City Council. I just basically did a outline of what we have passed in the city council since I've been in office, since June of twenty twenty-four. If you actually go on city council, on the city of Arkola's website, you can go to all the city council meetings and see where, and see the minutes, and see what we've already expended funds on. So just, so just so you'll be clear, so we can let you know exactly what we're doing with taxpayer dollars. I'd like to go to the next page. One of the posts that came up, and unfortunately, all these posts are coming from the former mayor. And, and I think it's important for me to take the time to address this because somebody who's been in a leadership position for six years, and who's operating a page called Arkola Citizen, this may come across as very credible, and I want taxpayers to realize that we are not misappropriating funds, we are not engaged in corruption, we are not engaged in stealing taxpayer dollars. And as you see, former Mayor Burton, he talks about we'd rather spend our taxpayer dollars on lawyers. Unfortunately, we are having to spend a lot of extra taxpayer dollars on attorney fees and stuff because we're having to do a lot of redressing of issues from the past administration that should have already been addressed, or maybe shouldn't have occurred even in the first place. So as I go through this, I will definitely kind of illustrate that point. And as you see here, he says they need to know where the tax dollars are being spent, where and why, and make sure that we have transparency. This particular presentation is aimed at giving him the transparency that he wants. So on the next slide, he tells, first of all, he's, he's maligned my character since I've been in, since I actually started running. He's slandered my name, and he's done the same to this council, and talked about what we are doing up here, and, and that's okay, you know what, that's, that's what they say is politics, right? So I get it. And, and for a year, I have, I have been getting it, and I have been just kind of shrugging it off. But when you start saying this too many times, like I said, and residents start believing it, I think we need to take some time to address it. He said that all I've ever done really is run a summer program to line my pockets using taxpayer money and not dispose of how the money is spent. This is a very direct and deliberate, straight-up untrue, you know, being dishonest because everything that we ever did here in the city of Arkola, not only did we stand up and give reports every year, we did presentations every year, we have every receipt that we ever spent the city of Arkola's money on was presented to this, to this, to this council. And so every one of those, so he, this, this stuff is very deliberate. As you see, Mayor, at the time, Mayor Burton was the one who came to me and asked me to run summer program because he had been told that I've been running programs for kids for many, many years. As you see this letter that came from Mayor Burton in twenty twenty-one, he's highlighting how, oh, we've done such a great job with such success of the programs and all that stuff, and how they're going to continue to support the program. The next, the next letter comes in twenty twenty-three saying the same thing, and talking about how they're going to allow us to continue the operations here in the city hall, and how much it has helped the kids. If you see for the next four pages, every single year from September twenty twenty-one, you'll see these are regular city council minutes, where we stood up here and given reports of what we did with taxpayers' money that he allocated to the city, to our nonprofit organization at the time. So, and if you go through one, it's twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four. Every single, every single year, we've done that. This is our fifth year, this summer will be our fifth year providing these services to these kids. And I'm not going to allow these types of, just mischaracterization of what we've been doing to keep us from actually continuing this program and providing the service to our, to our resident. Then he posts one, saying what a crooked administration going on now, saying that twenty thousand dollars was given to us, somebody on the council for record services. I'm not, I've talked to a couple of people from the record services, and they're like, well, why would we give y'all twenty thousand dollars? I mean, we trying to make money, and which does not make sense at all. But to go out and, you know, like I say, put this out here and post this, you know, I'll, what I'm going to show you as we go through this presentation, that oftentimes, he has a habit of accusing me and/or this council of doing the very things that I will show that he's been doing while he's been in office. And I, listen, I really hate to expend my time doing this, but this is way too important because the accusations that he's leveling, and that every single day he's posting stuff, that it just gets to a point at time, at some point, I mean, it's like, come on, we got to do something different. He says sixty-five thousand dollars of taxpayer dollars are missing, and no one wants to say what happened to it, stay tuned. Well, we told him what, he know what happened to it, he did open records requests, asking for the very, the check that we spent the money on. And it was, it was money spent on the attorney fees for a case for the three council members who lodged it against the city of, against the mayor, asking what he was doing. And so, listen, he, he, he got so invested in this, he had about fifteen of his friends also submitting the same open records request for this sixty-two thousand dollar check that we had paid to these, to the attorneys. And he sent it to, and he sent it to the Foreman County DA's office, and filed a complaint for us spending the money. The DA's office came back and said, we find nothing here. And so that was dismissed. One of the ones that I thought was so, you know, just really lacked any tact from somebody in leadership. He says, it's official now, Mayor Williams has now shut the city down for future development by giving all the water and sewer connections to one developer, which means if you're black, Hispanic, or Indian and have property in the city of Arkola, you won't get services. So he goes on to call me a modern-day Uncle Tom, and call me a house in wood. I, I, I can't recall since the seventies being actually hearing somebody say that, so that word to me. But to, from someone who sat in this chair and talking about a resident of the city, I think it just shows lack of class, and it just, it just really has no place. But, but to set the record straight, it was actually Fred Burton, who is the reason why the city right now today has very limited capacity. These projects that, when we do these expansions on these projects, they take two, sometimes three years to come into actual fruition. So if he had participated, you heard the engineer say earlier that the city didn't participate in the last expansion, which was in twenty twenty-three. And if you look at this, it's dated November twenty twenty-three, the city decided that it was not going to participate in the expansion. Had he participated in that expansion, we would have the necessary services to date, because it just recently came online. We would have the services to continue providing adequate utility services to all residents and to new development coming into the city. But he chose not to participate. There was a letter from the freshwater one's attorney that basically stated that the city notified the district that it would not participate in the new expansion. So the very thing that he's telling people out here that is this current mayor, who is not allowing them to have access to services, it was the, that, he was the very one that committed those, the acts that caused us not to have the capacity. So since we've been in here, yes, we've, like I said, we've had lots and lots of unnecessary new expenses that we've had to, to expand, funds we've had to expand nineteen thousand dollars on, twenty thousand dollars basically, on redoing speed bumps. These speed bumps, if anybody who was going through Pinedale Manor, as you can see, where everybody was scraping the bottom of their cars, mine included, they, they had to be replaced, and we had to have them redone, and it was a number of them, so that's, that's where that cost came from. If you remember, we had this nice big digital sign out in front of the city of Arkola, which the city paid out, rated almost fifty thousand dollars for. Well, because he didn't show the, didn't have the forethought to talk with the engineer, he put the, the sign in a place where, because it was during construction out there, it was a place that the sign couldn't be. So they had to spend money to take the sign down. And he had one of his buddies to store the sign, and then it was okay storing the sign until he lost the election. And when he lost the election, then the buddy came knocking on the door saying, hey, we owe all of these thousands of dollars of storage fees. And we were like, where's the contract? That show we, and that this council approved that there were storage fees that we had to pay, uh, the guy couldn't produce it. But nevertheless, at this point, we don't know where the sign is. Because the gentleman said that it's going to be, we got to pay storage fees, and then it's a ten thousand dollar fee in order to put the sign back up. So we, he, we tried to contact him, he's tried to contact us, and I think we had the last, Justin, our city attorney was trying to get in touch with them, and they never could connect. And so there's another unnecessary fee. And when we'll get the sign back, this whole fifty thousand dollars that was spent on that, it's down, it's drowning, draining. Then he says, what in the world is going on on South Pine Street and five twenty-one? They're allowing the poor citizens over there to be drowned out by that development. That development, mind you, was signed off on by Fred Burton. On the day before he was leaving office, he signed off on a permit, on the permit that allowed that development to come into play. And it did not have the proper drainage that it needed. And so whenever it would rain, the poor people who live right behind him were just being flooded out. So we actually went over and had a fire marshal and chief to put a stop-work order to it. It got to the point, they kept building, and so what we ended up having to do is get a professional inspector, inspection, inspecting company to come in here, a contractor to come in, and they too went over, inspected the property, gave them a stop-work order, and told them they could not do another thing until they fixed the drainage. They are now fixing the drainage. So it is not this administration who is trying to flood out those people. We are making sure, I'm telling you, we're not allowing any developers to come in here that's going to harm, I don't care how many permits they have and who it's signed by, that's going to harm the existing residents that live here and cause harm to their families and/or their property. The next one, he says, the city of Arkola led by Mayor Williams is giving your tax dollars away at the clip of a hundred dollars an hour since February for an investigation. Arkola has lots and lots of money. And this is important because, you, you know, I don't even get all the threads and what people are saying, but you know, you know, what, you know, you got residents saying, well, what do we need to do? Because they're buying into these things that he's saying and believing it. Now, yeah, I will tell you, and I'll tell you a little bit more about it, we are, we are, we do have an investigation going on, and I'll tell you why we have an investigation going on a little bit later. And, but in terms of giving away your tax dollars, I'm going to show you how the former mayor literally was giving away tax dollars. In Texas, when you look at, when developers come in, there's an impact fee that's charged. And basically what that is, those are charges assessed to fund capital improvements needed and to support the development. Oftentimes, we can credit developers because they bring in so much of that infrastructure themselves, and so we can credit those impact fees to them. They also offset the burden that new development placed on our existing city infrastructure lines, right? So those are fees that are paid by developers in order to, you know, help offset, I'm not there yet, help offset those costs. Also, there are utility tap lines, you know, any of y'all who, who've been it, moved to the city, you got to pay a two thousand dollar tap fee for water and a seventeen hundred and fifty dollar tap fee for sewer, if you go connect to the city's sewer, water and sewer line. When you come in as a developer, the developer pays those fees. They are due when you get your building, your permit. And, and sometimes because they're developers, just like we pay two thousand dollars and seventeen fifty, because the lines for developers may be bigger, sometimes they have to pay even higher costs. So this was from a presentation that was made to the, the city, the residents of Arkola under Mayor Burton at that time, where he says that impact fees were charged at a rate of two thousand six hundred and seventy-two, uh, I'm sorry, two thousand six hundred and seventy-six dollars per water connection and four thousand five hundred and sixty-three dollars per sewer connection. So if you go to the next page, we had a project, a developer come in with a project that wanted to bring in two hundred and seventeen homes, just water, water. And for water alone, those impact fees would have been five hundred and eighty thousand dollars, six hundred and ninety-two, six hundred and ninety-two dollars, five hundred and eighty, six hundred and ninety-two dollars. The tap fees for the water, and I'm just doing this based on residential cost, right, would have been four hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars, for a total of one million, fourteen thousand dollars. And I'll show you later why I put that seventy-five thousand dollar credit, because when they were negotiating an agreement, at one point, they said, okay, well, we can, we can credit you up to seventy-five thousand dollars for, for, for the infrastructure that you're bringing. And so it would have brought it down to nine hundred and thirty-two, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars, six hundred and ninety-two. Nine hundred and ninety, oh my God, nine hundred and thirty-nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars, right? That's what it would have been. So in negotiating these, this agreement, initially, the developer was going to have to pay impact fees. They were going to have to pay for infrastructure for water and sewer lines, they were going to have to pay for fee, all the things associated with lawyers and engineers and all of that, right? If you look up a little bit further, you got where the, the developer was going to pay for the infrastructure of the water and sewer lines, the developer was going to pay for the, all the pipes, for the lift station, for the water meter that was going to go to the property. They were going to pay for the city, all of these different things, and the developer, they were going to get a credit up to seventy-five thousand dollars on that impact fees. At some point, as you see, as late as June ninth, the parties agreed that the developer was going to be solely responsible for all the design and construction costs for the water meter to serve the property. As late as June eleventh, they were going to be credited seventy-five thousand dollars for, toward impact fees, and the developer was going to pay water tap fees equal to the cost for such taps established by the city. So in other words, they were going to have to pay those tap fees, water tap fees for all two hundred and seventeen of those homes, okay? By June twentieth, the developer and the property was not going to be subject to any water impact fees or any water tap fees. And in all that time, this, this agreement was not being brought back and forth before this council. This was, this agreement was signed on June twentieth, twenty twenty-three. However, don't, don't hold it back. You say it. However, on June twentieth, twenty twenty-three, if you, if I, I could bring you the whole list, this is it right here. This is all the changes, the amendments that was made on June twentieth, twenty twenty-three for that agreement. It was more than seven different changes on June twentieth. June twentieth, the day that the meeting was going to occur, that the council was going to vote on that. You, any developer coming into the city knows that you cannot, on the day of the meeting, still be making changes to an agreement that the council is supposed to be looking at and trying to approve on that day. In fact, when you look at it, the council didn't actually, the, the, the agreement that was uploaded into the system wasn't actually uploaded into the date after, on June twenty-first. So this council didn't even have access to the agreement that was initially signed, that was, I mean, eventually signed by Fred Burton on June twentieth. Not to mention, I don't know about you all, but I've never signed a sheet that just has a signature page on it. I, I don't do it. I need to have something at the top that says clearly what this document is and what it is that I am signing. But nevertheless, because anything before that, anybody can change, and then just slap this on the back end of it, right? So then, of course, the last meeting that Mr. Burton served as mayor here on May fourteenth, twenty twenty-four, I, I remember coming before this. I, I remember coming before this council that they wanted y'all to, uh, approve ninety thousand dollars, ninety thousand one hundred and fifty dollars for a water meter to go to that property and that the city was gonna pay for that meter. But the quote that they were looking at was actually, it says, tap and inspection fees for ninety thousand one hundred and fifty dollar. And the city doesn't pay for the tap fees and inspection fees for, for developers. So, but just, let's just say, we decided, say, say that the council decided, okay, well, we're gonna even credit that ninety thousand one hundred and fifty dollars toward, toward the impact fees. It still would have been eight hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars that was due to this city for impact fees and tap fees and all of that. So Burton tries to say that we, in this particular, this administration is giving away money. He gave away, if, if, if we had allowed the development to continue, he would have given away eight hundred and forty-nine thousand five hundred and forty-two dollars to the developer. And we would have been on hook for that. The taxpayers of the city of Arcola would have been on hook for that. But to make matters worse, in this particular project, on the day he's leaving office, he said, please know that today is my last day serving as the mayor of Arcola. We have a scheduled council meeting tonight with your project on the agenda at 6:00 PM. I just wanna inform you that we, you and city, have, excuse me, has a development agreement in place and I stand by you with respect to this agreement. The climate in the city and the council tells me that they will try to not stand up to the agreement that was passed by the same city council. They meaning the majority of the members will try and bring back, bring this back to a vote, which I believe will fail. I'm committed to supporting you and your development, even as a witness, if you have to take legal action against the city of Arcola. Please feel free to contact me if you need anything else. Thank you. Now, this is someone who's sitting in this chair who was supposed to be advocating on behalf of the city and the residents of this city. And he just said, he will stand against this city with the developer who he had just handed over eight hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars that was due to the city. On top of that, if this agreement that he passed, he was so convinced that this council agreed to that, agreed, approved that agreement, why would they wanna bring it back and then change it up? That tells you right there that that was something not right with this agreement. And so, uh, Fred Burton can post all he wants on his page, but I will tell you, I'm gonna stand and I'm gonna defend myself, I'm gonna defend this council because we're doing some work on behalf of the people and I thank you all for your commitment toward working on behalf of the residents in this, uh, in the city. And I will stand up and I'll go to bat for you each and every day. Next page. Uh, not only did he reduce, I mean, give up the money, he, he didn't reduce, he just gave up the impact fees for, uh, that particular project A. He also did it on another project. And said, good morning, Mayor Burton, we appreciate and thank you for reducing our water and wastewater impact and connection fee. Those fees cannot be reduced and or waived without this council's approval. He oftentimes seemed like when he was acting and going behind the backs of council and legislating on behalf of this city for what hit his own, in his own interest. Then he, you know, you know, he didn't miss anybody out there doing any work in the city without, if they didn't have a permit, he was, he'd be quick to, you know, come and tap you on the shoulder and say you need a permit. But when he came up and he needed a permit, put in an application for a permit. The next page. When he, and he approved his, uh, got his driveway and sidewalk approved. Not only did he, uh, go ahead and just do, approve this himself, for himself, but he also didn't pay the permit fee.
No.
And we know that anybody who does not pay a permit fee and is doing work in the city, that fee is double. So Fred Burton, you still owe the city. And these are the plans. Now, the way we go through and talking about we gotta have all these plans and stuff for all these residents, these are the plans that were submitted for him. So again, and I tell you, this broke my heart, this next thing. This is from a resident of the city of Arcola who talked about how they were being harassed by the mayor. That there and their husband, they, they had come down here and moved, they were first time home buyers and they didn't realize that they needed a permit. And it was a police officer that stopped by and told him so kindly and was very nice to them, told him, hey, you need a permit. And they were like, okay, came up here to take care of everything that they need to take care of. Next page. But one of the things that he said to them, this is not Little Mexico, you cannot bring any trailers or any business here, you know, or have a business here. And you cannot have mobile homes. And she said, even though he was so disrespectful and racist, she shut her mouth because she was in the process of becoming a permanent resident and didn't want anything to interfere with her application. He was preying on people he felt was vulnerable and it just, it just really bugs me that, and this is not the only person that has said that. But a lot of people don't wanna come forward because they don't know, as you see, there's an election going on, he's running again, and they are afraid of what might happen. She goes on to say, Burton came to our house again, mandated a five hundred dollar permit fee to be paid directly to him. Not only was he giving the money away, he was taking from the residents here in the city. He wanted an accounting, I'm giving him an accounting, I'm being transparent. So perhaps when he was riding around the city, uh, looking at who needed permits or whatever, every time he rode around or whatever, he was charging the city. And over three and a half years to the tune of ten thousand dollars, let me go to the last page. To the tune of ten thousand nine hundred and forty-nine dollars and eighty-nine cents that he was charging for mileage when he was driving, doing wherever he needs to go. That's taken from taxpayer, taxpayer dollar. None, and, and this has, I can't say that this is Fred Burton, but it looks just like his other posts, but it's anonymous. She's hired her friends and families just to line their pockets with taxpayer dollars. Well, first of all, I haven't hired any of my family. I've told my family, yeah, don't even ask me for a job, okay? Because I don't want to give even the appearance of anything, uh, and although, look, I'm, I don't think it's anything wrong if you hire, you know, if they are qualified and you're not supervising, I don't think it's necessarily illegal. But to put it out as if it's something unfair is that I'm doing. And then, as you see on the next couple pages, he's doing the very same thing. Now, this is a proposal, this one and the next page, look, they, they look exactly alike. It's for the exact same project, which is, uh, the painting of making this trailer and some containers or whatever. The two exact things on the same exact date. One of them to be done by Dwight E. Burton and another one is for a different person. So what he did was, I guess somebody must have told him, oh, you might not wanna put it in your brother's name. Then they did it to, and put it in somebody else's name and then they paid it in that person's name. To the tune of four thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars. Again, I'm not saying that that is illegal. If he's qualified to do the job, I'm not saying that that was illegal. But don't put it out there as if this is something that I'm doing when I haven't, but it's something that you have done. Okay, so this is showing that you actually did, uh, pay that, okay? Now, on this one, this next one, this was a citation issued, issued from the city of Arcola Police Department to Fred Anthony Burton for assault by physical contact. So he had the citation and I guess he decided to dismiss it and prove it himself. If you look on here, it says the state of Texas versus Burton, Fred Anthony, it says, I Tremaine Ruiz, complainant, who was the police officer who gave the citation, uh, decided not to, uh, you know, I guess decided not to go further with the charges of assault. But he signs as the complaint, Fred Burton signs as the complaintant, not Mr. Ruiz, Officer Ruiz, who was the, who was the actual complaintant. So he didn't follow the process of how it normally is in dismissing a citation for itself. Again, a benefit to Fred Burton. Uh, the other person that was also in, that also got a citation at the same time that he was engaged with was a female and that's all I'll say about that, but that one was also dismissed. Next one. But perhaps the most egregious act of all that I saw coming from that administration. The property next door, approximately four point one acres of land, if it, the address is 434 McKeva Road, was purchased by the city of Arcola in 2021. At that time, the value of that property was seventy-eight thousand dollars, for part, for part of it, seventy-eight thousand one hundred and eighty, seventy-eight thousand one hundred and eighty dollars. That was the assessed value. I forbear, okay? And you can see that the outline of the property up there, part of it is, is unusable land, it shows you. And it's, and it's just right next door. Now, the owners, because there was a little tiny part at the very top up there that was considered commercial, when they got there, the tax, the taxes for that particular property, next, next one, it was valued at totally at one, one hundred and forty-eight thousand six hundred and eleven dollars. So, okay, so let's say it's a hundred and forty-eight thousand, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. When they decided to get it, get ready to go out to buy, purchase the property, a, as you see, the appraisal by National Appraisal Partners and it was for, uh, 434 McKeva Road, the appraisal came back for that residential property, that they, they did an appraisal based on commercial property, that was a residential space, at six hundred and fifty thousand dollars was the appraisal that came back. But you know what? That wasn't enough for Mayor Burton. He said, well, you know, you can go up or down ten percent either way on the appraisal amount. And so he decided, well, six hundred and fifty thousand wasn't enough. They actually ended up, these are the properties that, that were compared, that they used as complexes. Uh, and they were all, as you can see there, commercial property. That wasn't enough for Mayor Burton. He said, and on the audio, and I quote, he's saying, uh, yeah, was, they decided to purchase it for seven hundred and fifteen thousand. He said, well, that's within the legal limits, right? Uh, going up ten, ten percent. He was advocating to pay more of the city's tax dollars and a five hundred percent increase in the assessed value for that property. And if you look, if you, if you go back a couple, to that, uh, to this, the appraisal district thing, even today, y'all, it's still paying at seventy-eight thousand dollars, assessed at seventy-eight thousand dollars. And the city paid seven hundred and fifteen thousand dollars for that outright. So, so, so I just wanna say, listen, uh, while I was trying to look at all of this stuff, I wanted to find out, look, I need to find the supporting, not yet, not that one yet. I wanted to find the supporting documentation for why some of these actions were taken. So I'm thinking maybe there's a, there's a reason. And so I was looking at the, I wanted to look at the computer. I went to his computer to see if I can find any of these supporting documents. After six years, there were zero documents on that computer. Zero. The computer had been wiped clean. So, yes, we have an investigation, there is an investigation, let me just put it like that, there's an investigation. Their computer has been turned over. And, uh, listen, there needs to be some accountability. He wanted transparency, I'm giving him transparency, I'm giving the city transparency. Uh, the day that, that he left this office, he says that there was seven million seventy-nine thousand two hundred and thirty-nine dollars and, and seventy-three cents fund, funds that city had in its, you know, in its coffers at that time. Yet he's went to the DA's office saying, and we're spending all this money and, and they're spending it on stuff that they shouldn't be spending it on. Well, as of yesterday, we have eight million two hundred and forty-five thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars and eighty-three cents. And yet, despite we have also spent money on things that the residents in this city has asked us to, to spend monies on. Uh, you, some of y'all see the little booklets that we have out there, we showing exactly what we doing. If you look at the agenda items on our, uh, city council meeting, everything, exactly what we've been spending money on. There's a lot of money that is spent on every day in the maintenance and you, you heard Roland interfere, the, uh, the operator and, and Lawrence talk about these lift stations, the wastewater treatment plant, the water plant, the constant maintenance and repair that we have to make to go. Yeah, some of those things, yeah. That were neglected and that, that we have to, we have to do because that is safety for the residents of this city. And so I am proud of the work that we have done. I am proud of the funds and the money that we spent on behalf of the citizens here in this city. We are gonna continue to meet their needs. As, 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 like you said, we're going out for COs so that we can address their drainage issues, so we can address some of this street problem. We have all these issues and yet he was willing to give away eight hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars of fees that should have come to the city. So y'all, listen, this Arcola Citizens Page, it's a private group. It is not a public page for news, for citizens who are concerned about road conditions or health that they need, or summer programs, or whatever they need, so. This is the voice of one person, Fred Burton. If you get on that page and you say something that he doesn't like, like most all of us up here, well, some of us are blocked from that page. We cannot even access that page. If we had a concern, we could, as residents of Arcola, we can't get on there. This is his private page that he uses to slander and, and malign and just misrepresent, mischaracterize what's going on in this city. And you know what, at some time, at some point, you just have to fight back to when somebody's constantly trying to bully you. And I will not be bullied, I have never been bullied, I will not be bullied. And so he wanted his transparency and accountability, I hope he got it, and that's all I got. So thank y'all for listening.
Yes.
Is there anything that our attorney can do to make you bring some kind of prosecution against this? But this is a lot of theft.
That, that's, that's for, uh, that's for the DA's office.
No, well, Mayor said it right. That information has been turned over to this attorney's office and that's really your remedy here.
Good, should have been. So.
You don't need to vote to accept this report, this presentation.
No, I think, yeah, Mayor, you might make it clear that this is your presentation.
This is my presentation, this is my presentation, this is based on documents that have been, that I was able to find. So, yes, so, and they are, yeah, they are documents that are here. So, uh, I'm not gonna use conjecture and rumors and put any of those out there, I, I deal with facts. And so that's what they are. Yes, so. Can I get a time check?
We're gonna make a motion.
Eight oh nine.
It's eight oh nine, can I entertain a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Made a motion.
Yeah, that will join, uh, for the night.
Yeah.
This council meeting.
She's made a motion, can I get a second?
A second.
Motion has been made by Mayor Protem Ebenseko, second by Councilmember Biggie for a German, so be it.